It is time to call the Sherwood City Council to make an order. At this time, I would like to have the following candidates come forward and make their turn. It is time to adjourn to the non. It's time to start voting, please. Would you go ahead and make your remarks?
Yes, I am. Carson, Shepard, Collin, Price, James, Rinditch, Logan, Tilton, Josh, Bubba, Higginson, Hayden Young. They're all working on their citizenship and community. Back to my partners in first place.
We are right. We are not a state of America. We serve a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Brooks.
Here.
Harmon.
Here.
Billy.
Here.
Commandant.
Here.
Ty.
Here.
Kemplinger.
Here.
Sanders.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Uh, we're from Bennett's and Brederby, October twenty twenty sixteen, transfer of the adoption.
Second.
Commandant.
Aye.
Kemplinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Billy.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Sanders.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Uh, we're from Bennett's and Brederby, October twenty twenty sixteen, transfer of the adoption.
Second.
Commandant.
Aye.
Kemplinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Billy.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
We have October twenty sixteen, five inches. Any questions, comments? At this time, Sherwood Police Department takes presentation. Congratulations. We're meeting in our provisions, avatar and approach provisions. We did meet, and we worked on the budget, which was approved, and we submitted, I guess what the name of the budget is next month, next month's meeting. And also working on the trail line, which will be open tonight, and again, the trail this year starts backwards, starts on the fair, tall road, so we're going to do the trail line, the tall road, and exit at Sherwood, of course. I want to say, uh, we can pull around, or all this literature, but here's the work we did, and we had to balance out the last bit of here tonight, so, um, all the parts of the red, we're all working it in, and I'll be thanking the city clerk's office for all the money they're going to be counting, so, thank you. And we will not meet in December, our next meeting will be January two thousand seventeen. So, starting with mission, our separation meeting.
We did not meet.
First, not meeting.
We did not meet, and we had meetings Thursday, and Thursday, and Thursday.
Line meeting. Sixty six, meeting. Sir.
Sir, we, we, we did meet, uh, during the office, and, uh, we were here, and, uh, I'm saying we've been, we've been one time, Mark. An ordinance fixing rights and services for us about the system of the safety of our saw and describing the matter there, too, in our mercy, but the purposes that the purpose is. If I'm saying now that it's been ready, we're going to have a public hearing, that depends, uh, your being. Uh, you know, I thought that there was, uh, we were farming to the, uh, hearing, and about change, but, uh, we're, uh, and, uh, we, uh, we.
Straight meeting.
That's great, and we, uh, finish, uh, the, uh, um, the procedure from there here, by media, from, uh, the, it does have, uh, the run of the day, uh, 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 uh. Also, from your location perspective, I think is, I like to, uh, that the, uh, as I've read, but, uh, in the last meeting, uh, because in light of the, uh, uh, I love the, uh, 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 uh.
I second that.
And, uh, if you're. You just move, I'll be heading.
Commandant.
Aye.
Kemplinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Billy.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Ty.
Yes.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
In order to survey to the Sherwood City Council, we've ignored all new employee job requirements of our mercy, in front of, that's important. An ordinance provided for air control within the city of Sherwood, dealing with, uh, the ordinance, is by, uh, one more control law, potentially, here, keeping animals within the, uh, the city of Sherwood, uh, status of the, uh, and they, probably, sir, from the first, uh, stages, they, most of your functions.
I don't, appreciate any question, myself and city attorney, if you might have about that, just to come up with a, uh, 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 any questions, please, with. That, that will be on the city's side, just because I know why head owners, they're pretty passionate, and we changed it, so that would be, uh, uh, uh.
I consider it's long overdue, and it's, it's very long, uh.
Oh, I don't disagree with that, just, just leaving it, uh, the people who know city things. I, I don't disagree though, but they are like, also, I can give some kudos to Robin and her staff for giving this to the ultimate, and letting the state story be happy, or to do this, because, as you said, uh, a very long document, and a lot of time to read inside of it, and so several, or I think I called Robin, she did, she talked it all through, so, thank you for watching, Robin.
Uh, we have a motion to pay the required, uh, uh.
That may be.
Aye.
Kemplinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Billy.
Aye.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye.
An ordinance by the Sherwood City Council, could be sufficient, and add for funding for the river, for free, and rights, and air project, in our mercy, and for the, uh, uh.
Questions, sir?
Uh, yeah.
Say.
Ask a question. I heard, I heard two different dollar amounts, and I did not, and I apologize, and three of them, that started to feel five dollar bills, still pending, and, and price is there, there's always a chance of a ten percent over, and, uh, a lot of these, uh, a pretty good deal today, and, uh, we are waiting till I sign the documents, they.
I think, uh, Madam Chair, I speak, uh, uh, Kevin, I think we, uh, the straight meeting we did, we did ask for a big, we did, we, uh, state, uh, government, where it's here, and, uh, we need to, to be aggressive about this, we, we, we discussed it, and I think we're, we're, uh, uh, okay.
Commandant.
Aye.
Kemplinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Billy.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
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 It's where does he call? Commandant.
Aye.
Kemplinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Billy.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Billy.
Aye.
Martin, this is two or nine, four.
Last one, Captain, I think, uh, and, uh, top, curious about the status of, uh, the rate of, uh, um, uh, label of, uh, the, uh, service part, uh, the service part is private, uh, respect, the contract we have, is relying, uh, uh, the documents of the contract, it's a one-year, uh, issue, and, however, has a self-executing renewal every year, and, uh, the self-executing renewal can be, uh, terminated, provided, give a ninety-day notice prior to end of term renewal. Term, since routine, it's, uh, already inside of ninety days, first point, and, my suggestion is, the council is obliged to, uh, bring this to an end, and, uh, get a notice, uh, to have controls, uh, in the next, the term period, that it will be, uh, not repeated. Uh, motion, uh, uh, for, uh, for, uh, you know, since, uh, seventeen, seventeen years. I think, uh, this, uh, opposition, guys, they're finding out the latest data, says far as, uh, some programs that are five hundred and forty-six people, or, uh, certain spots, uh, a lot of games, that, uh, in the water, uh, uh, they, they, eight thousand dollars, uh, source of, uh, issue, and, or fifteen thousand, uh, in life, uh, is quite efficient, have been, uh, playing, uh, and, uh, they should, uh, uh, I think, uh, I think, uh, like, uh, uh, service knowledge, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that means, it's a lot of, uh, 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 that's where we all, this program, uh, this, uh, this program, uh, I think, back, uh, this, uh, this, uh, that's, well, and, just want to let you guys know what, uh, uh, uh.
Ah, you're saying, I think it's a good program, but, uh, I think the complaints that we're all getting, over the extensive amount of bail, and, and they were just failing, they once a year, but they, it's continued, uh, failing, and failing, and failing, and elderly people, my neighbors are elderly, and they thought something was wrong, and had to pay for it, and the elderly sometimes don't understand, and, and that's what we need to be looking out for, as more citizens, to help them understand, not everybody that is in the, in our century, so.
Well, I, I agree, uh, on, of course, my concern about it, it's always been this, is, I don't like the city Sherwood's name on, on primary company, uh, it's, as we enforce this, this company, right now, with law, so, I don't have any problem with anybody to, uh, the Sherwood, we have to be on, uh, 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 uh.
They can continue operating, I mean, obviously, they're selling things, you know, they have established themselves, you know, for many years, so, they certainly continue operating, they just don't need to, uh, look though, they find this, you know, I think, I think that's part of the problem, though, because I were giving, I was, uh, I was, uh, about this meeting, about doing this, when we did it, because of the logo, and they, they were just hard, it's a hard patch of gold, and they had, uh, city logo, so I think if we decide to fix this, uh, because we don't want our team logo, or we don't want to say we're, we're dead, and they're going to go buddy, so. I agree, yeah, I agree, but I think they're, they're great.
I think it's important, that, that so many of the folks have commented about this, jumping from the city Sherwood, and, um, you guys, is, uh, like, the band, uh, uh, they do business in the city, uh, they've done this, and see what they're doing well, then, uh, other, other, uh, companies wanting to do the same thing, so, there's plenty of business out there, people, they can choose, but it's with cities, they're, uh, you do this, and, 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 I think that's, uh, trying to, uh, against, uh, the, the question was last time, uh, next, so, I say we take the name, city often, and, and signatures of, of, uh, if, if it's, uh, anybody else in the city. The change, uh, motion, uh, to, uh, discontinue service, or, uh, uh, yeah, I like that motion, that's second.
Aye.
Kemplinger.
Aye.
Harmon.
Aye.
Billy.
Aye.
Brooks.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Next, uh, this is, uh, thank, uh, regulations, city council, uh, city attorney, they'd be best to add, uh, there is something, uh, some, uh, that is, uh, the council, uh, people, uh, that, this time, uh, the next time, uh, the, uh, uh. I have Steve here, Jerk, uh, Quinn, Sam, uh, Darbin, Kristen, Eric, and Skeeters, uh, on, uh.
Madam Chair, can I, uh, interject something, uh, uh, in the last meeting, there were a number of things that happened during discussion, people clapping hands, and hollering, and things like that, according to our rules and procedures, we shall define, and I read that one, uh, uh, imagine, uh, this is our procedures that we adopted in January, uh, uh, Dean, it's called meeting to curate, it's what we, uh, adhere to as far as city council members, uh, and it says, citizens and other, other visitors attending city council meetings, shall observe the same rules for primary, towards good conduct, act to the city, to members of the city council. Any person making personal and permanent profane slander or remark, due to, uh, poachers or persons in the city council, while attending the city council meeting, shall be removed from the room at the request of the chair, and that person shall be marked for detention before city council during that session of the city council. If the mayor, presiding officer fails to act, any member of the city council, they move to require enforcement of the rules, and affirmative vote for the majority of the city council, shall require the mayor, chair, and mayor. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, and even feet, whistles, yells, or similar demonstrations shall not be permitted by the mayor, chair, or, uh, to be moved, depending on the room. I only say this, I only read that, for all of our benefit, uh, uh, in this, uh, right here, that we protect ourselves in a professional manner, uh, in this, uh, thank you.
Appreciate that, and I think next year, we can add, so, uh, uh, lots of, uh, lots of, uh, I cannot, there are a lot of angels, spirits, and, uh, the dress, I think, uh, so, so you wanted to do that this time, I think everyone else is talking the same.
You want, uh, uh, you mean, uh?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize, it was first, uh, uh, it was, uh, first thing. Not, uh, uh, uh.
Well, yeah, we're just a talk. You know, we've got several concerns about this, important, uh, city council, uh, this leaves a mark on, uh, very, uh, uh, I'm, 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 uh, placing, uh, departmentation, uh, planner, I'm not saying that maybe we did something, uh, good, uh, 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 just questions I asked, uh, 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 ask, what do we expect out of the, uh, uh, what exactly, when, because, you know, and, uh, we've got all the problems with connection to that, uh, city, at this point, Tom, right there, Kevin, Johnson, being connected to something, and God, wouldn't be, uh, hot, uh, 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 he's working on, uh, 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 if we had, uh, finding, uh, 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 all these things, uh, things that everybody has, uh, we, city, uh, 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 uh,
Uh, I don't know, I can't have any questions, I don't want y'all to think about, because if you haven't had the job, you don't have the job. The job description. You have the time here to sit down, know the job description, be able to rewrite the job description, and say that in the revised version. The head of the departments, they know their talent. They know what talent they need, they know what person is best for a certain job. That's what they do, that's what they need to be allowed to continue to do. Because I don't know of anybody up here that knows every single person in the city, what they do, what they're good at, to keep talent, to get talent, to use it the best you can, to make sure that your city works and runs correctly. And my last concern is, why is this an emergency? The God is fine, it says, um, this immediate preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare. That's all I have. Thank you for your time. Leslie Durbin, about ordinance number eight. I'm standing before you in town in opposition to ordinance number eight. I would like to reiterate my stance as to why I'm opposed to this ordinance. First, the city council board has the authority to make suggestions to the human resources department regarding a change in job duty or descriptions, since there is no need for an ordinance to be created and voted on by the council. This ordinance was initially brought forth as an emergency. This ordinance does not constitute an emergency status, as it does not pose immediate danger and will be assured with residence. A bill that emergency called, decided to try and raise the ordinance along, without knowledge of Sherwood residents. Next, I know it's not the responsibility of the city council to micromanage city departments. There is a place responsible, human resources department and department heads. If the city council needs, feels need to micromanage every aspect of every department, then why does it have human resources department and department heads? Let's let these people do their job, that's what they were hired for. This ordinance, if it opens this back, can legally bring about lawsuits. We do not need to open up City of Sherwood for lawsuits, which result in the loss of money from city costs. Next, the personnel committee in city council position should be made, should be able to make recommendations, and not a position of authority. There is only one person with HR experience on the city council, and even as well, council member stated that other government agencies that she has worked for never revise or wrote job descriptions. This was the job of the human resources department. Again, this would be considered micromanaging. Lastly, I would like to remind you all that the citizens of Sherwood elected each one of you to be a voice for the citizens of Sherwood. Last month's city council meeting, the twenty-nine, there has not been one citizen that spoke that was for this ordinance, not one. You've been elected to this position to listen to the citizens, not to try to support ordinances that need to be for your own personal gain and power. Creating and trying to pass this ordinance is wasting time and taxpayers' money, when there are more important things that should be on the agenda. Just as in last month's meeting, I've not heard one Sherwood citizen speak up in favor of this ordinance. I ask each and every one of you to listen to the citizens, and to uphold the job you were elected to do and vote no for this ordinance once and for all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christy Moret, from Littleborough Avenue. I'm here again in voice opposition to item number eight on the agenda. The ordinance that we have requested, that I'm requesting yet again, to be voted down by council and be elected to work for us. We stayed at last week, and the argument is no different today, that you as a legislative body are in all the fight of education, we now can hear it, we have a free. Our tax dollars are already allocated to pay people to be experts in this field for administrative duties. We use part of our budget to our human resources department to minimize the risk to this city, and the city that we love, and also minimizes the risk to our homes, which brings me to the next reason to reject this ordinance, running it by any limitation of risk. My general feeling is that you do a very good job of running tight ship with our different budget. Oversight of that budget was stated essentially, sorry, oversight of that budget was stated essentially as the root cause for the necessity of this ordinance. I would argue the opposite. Oversight of the budget is the exact reason why this ordinance should not be voted in. As we well know from prior really painful experience, the simple perception of wrong to a human resources department can send us down a legal path that can cost us millions of dollars, regardless of the intent. Micromanaging this aspect of city administration not only enhances the risk to our tax dollars, but this puts you in a direct line of fire for lawsuits, your house, your car, your retirement savings, you wipe out one, wrong word. Not only that, by placing yourselves at risk, you also get with the place is more reason to sue us. This ordinance is a potential gain that is magnified by your assets, unless there's some gross negligence happening today setting of job descriptions. Then this is unnecessary financial risk with little to no benefit to the taxpayers. Next, let's discuss the process that is in place. The role of the personnel committee is currently advised, not working. Your ordinance has specifically or authority is stated in the ordinance. The current process in addition to electing our mayor gives us a distinct vote to judge any political agenda that might creep into this process. In fact, very issue that seems to have brought this ordinance forward, the city planner job description, is an example of how this current process works in the U.S. It may not work to your personal or political agenda, but that is precisely why this process should remain in place. If this ordinance passes, you are formally exerting power, where you just previously showed that you're steering yourselves. Anytime you take on additional power, power must be extracted from somewhere else. This ordinance seems to be attempting to silence our vote in a really unwayed. We ask to keep the process the same, to retain our valuable input via the citizen appointments of our personnel committee, through the mayor that we elected to lead, lead the executive branch of the city, and the qualified human resources department that we play page and play. Lastly, you are elected by people to serve the people, the citizens, us, to be our voice in the legislative branch of the city. So far, the citizens I've heard have said, "No." I've heard no citizens speaking in favor of this, not one is supporting. Not one hand clapping in the audience, not one speaker standing up here on display publicly to be proponent of this issue. We, where are the citizens that have issued to the current process a voice? We have spoken twice with our presence, our voices in yes, our hands, and we demand a bill vote on this ordinance and all future attempts to micromanage the administration of this city. We request that you carefully consider our words, because your voices should speak to us tonight. And since we cannot clap to express our support, anyone that is against this ordinance, please raise your hands in the final round. Anyone in opposition? Thank you.
Thank you. I think you have, you should have a copy of my response, although I am required to present this in the House of Representatives. It's October twenty-sixth, twenty-second, January twenty-third, submitted this to our city by the way, from Angela Wilson. During the record stand will be, uh, October twenty-sixth, six, city council giving you ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two, on the agenda, time that a ordinance, straight lining, engineering permits, and plan the dorm, into the engineering department, radio planning, section dorms, and pass that to the city council. Arkansas statute key forty-eight dash forty-three dash five-four. It provides this call to private leaders, speaker, caller. One, a very detailed in five days, none is accepted after the actions the council threw any ordinance resolution or document were made voted out, party partner of the general protection is contrary to the vote interest. I believe the vote rate was for this is contrary to the same use of the vote, and it motioned that this notice ended up with a vote rate, it's seriously signed, it's a complaint.
And I have to pause just one second. Uh, there was a letter submitted to the city council, uh, wanting to add, uh, this, and I was gonna read it, so that, uh, it should be entered into the records. Uh, it said, "Ladies and gentlemen, we understand, like, the force of support, the attached reference is for the very, very beginning of our city in seventeen. Without this ordinance, we do not have a heart to do, for the city, uh, in gas service. Without this ordinance, we came close to having a law to be in a library, in a residential area, and none do Sherwood Chamber, the higher end economic development person. There's a need, a direction for the city planner. We had so much pain to develop a good planner, we had time and training to be this proud. The winner is signed by Billy Morton, Lynn Stavill, I speak, Stavill, he, I can't read his last name, Byron Kim, he personally write, in my here. And I think about that, uh, I think about that letter. I've been talking to Byron yesterday, he, he called and asked about, and I think, uh, when he and I were speaking, uh, I think he was, I would say, glad, only had expectations upon nothing, uh, exactly what it would be, and he thought that he was, that was not for the city planner, and I think anybody up here that's against the city planner, they know, pretty, we need a city planner. And I'm not, I'm not trying to dispute what, what he was saying, or, or when he and I were speaking, and I explained that to him, he was planned, and I explained him that we're all for the city planner.
I'd like to mention other one, Nina.
Say.
Nina.
Uh.
Kevin, Harmon, Lily.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. David. William. No. You say we're always missing. Second. Nina.
Hi.
Kevin, Harmon, Lily.
Hi.
Hi, hi, going to here. William. Hi. Is ready to visit? Yes, um, I've had several people contact me and ask me what the status is on the economic development position, given the basis to what's happening with the, the, uh, here in the process, it's been a personal delay. Trying to calculate that projected reservation, that's something to, like, you know, answers, I think, for that, right? And you had a question, maybe library, I think, you think we're supposed to be, that, um, we have to get subs, and discuss, which is new, and try to have these kinds of stuff. We should have a place on, in that process. So, any, like, if we're being grand, we're, we'll be on this place, this season. Should be sent, and gotta get those, those things, thank you. In the way of the outfits, uh, five, December twenty-sixth, city council, any, on December nineteen, twelve o'clock, tonight, in the post, at seven thirty, six, nine, three P.M. Her first right this Saturday, to what the, the kids, like, her, he, uh, likes to view it as a city hall, a, 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 a.
And they can be raised on.
Yes, they're called, they're, uh, hard to, uh, we have paths, and paths, and we're identifying, uh, that, that, sorry, that's why we're gonna be breaking, so, at two o'clock, something, the market, yeah, what, uh, that I'm kind of being, and, 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 everybody, everybody, plenty of this. Sherwood U Center, Santa Morgan, Grand U Center, U Center, nine, six, one P.M. Or, if you say something, it's December tenth, twenty-sixth, eighth, Sherwood, four, eight, to ten A.M. Sherwood, I'm a show for, is, taking off the holidays, and off the van, I just want to go to seventeen, December, we have options, uh, ninety, and twenty-second, and also, I don't, also be free to options. We offer on December, holiday, third, sponsorship program, paper, homeless, animals, adoption fee, and also bill of vote, which now they can, 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 for the holiday season. Got any more answers?